Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda, either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, I'm John Doe, speaking on item five, and I agree with approving the contract. Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandiegach곡 county.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the register button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem. Just pick the in-person option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit register and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations, because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to room 302 or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Good morning. I will now call the July 22 San Diego County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We would like to take a moment to acknowledge the land we call home. There are communities in the San Diego region that face unjust conditions and circumstances related to the environments in which they live. The tribal nations of the San Diego region are an example of one community that has historically faced such injustices. We acknowledge the harmony that existed between the land, nature, and its original peoples, who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression. We pay our respect to the unceded territory and homelands of the 18 tribal nations in our region, the most in any county in the United States. We aspire to learn from indigenous traditional knowledge and experiences in undoing the injustices of the past. Andrew, please call the roll for today's session.
Thank you, Vice Terra Lawson-Reimer. Supervisor-elect Aguirre.
Presente.
Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp.
Here.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
And Vice Terra Lawson-Reimer.
Here. We now have the invocation, and Ashley Hillard will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you to every seat that has been filled here today, and thank you for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. Help us all to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill, and grant us the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Give a steadfast purpose so that we may faithfully serve to promote the well-being of all people. Now, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In order for Supervisor-elect Aguirre to be sworn in, we first need to certify the election. We will proceed with discussion item number one, adoption of a resolution declaring election results of the July 1, 2025, first supervisory district special election. We will begin with public comment.
Thank you, Vice Terra Lawson-Reimer. We have been requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we did not receive any ecomments on this item. Any individuals that requested to speak on item one by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the Board. I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals, Michael Brando and Truth. You're welcome to come forward in any order.
Hi there. Couldn't be more fitting to have yours truly, Truth, at the podium first. Congratulations to Paloma, but mostly congratulations to SEIU, UDW, IBW, and the Building Construction Trades Unions for buying Minion Paloma's way into a paycheck she could finally brag about. $21,500 of political union's slumlord money from the national city apartments funneled from poor renters who live in reportedly unsanitary conditions in a complex ran by Paloma's slumlord buddy, Matthew Lebo Gonzalez. Until Paloma pays all of her property taxes, she owes the county, she's unqualified to hold office. Us regular people would have already had our homes foreclosed on. Only a privileged person would get these free passes. From the Times of San Diego, quote, "Aguirre still owes more than $2,600 in three-year-old unpaid property taxes and penalties on her Imperial Beach condominium." Creditors have sued Aguirre on multiple occasions. Court records show Aguirre failed to attend key court hearings in two of those cases. In 2015, more than $31,000 in debts owed, $1,575 in credit card debt incurred in 2017 while Aguirre served in the office of New Jersey Senator Cory Booker, end quote. There's a pattern of mismanagement. And just like Nora, the unions love buying minions that are broke, they're easier to control. Not to mention, as a tax-evading mayor, she refused to even look at speakers like myself. She was so scared, just like Vanishing Vargas, that she abdicated her responsibilities, fleeing her post while I was speaking at the last Imperial Beach Council meeting. I wasn't sure if she ran back to La Mesa or what. Paloma's also done everything she can to disrupt real solutions to the sewage emergency, from having anti-Trump tariff tirades rather than supporting tariffs to hold Mexico accountable, to conspiring with Steve Padilla against IB to hijack SB 10 to take away to honor her mitigation, to voting no to real solutions the entire council approved of, to childishly ripping up a letter from the EPA. So a real congratulations to the city of Imperial Beach, who is now free from the burden of her external corruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Michael, welcome to hell, Paloma Aguirre. Welcome to hell. The good news is that the last five and a half years, we've gotten to learn how this operation goes. We got to use and become aware of what was said here to see the stakeholders that are involved in the operations here, not the people. And even based on what Truth just said, you're not here to represent the people. Some people even speculate the integrity of voting as if that mattered. It really doesn't. What's really interesting is your connection with Terra Lawson-Reimer, and that you have already appointed Paul Worley to be your chief of staff, who was the chief of staff during diabolical Nathan Fletcher's role here and the domestic terrorism that he participated in, in the transnational terrorism. It seems like all of these types of thugs, yes, I said the word thugs, run together. And that includes Tara. What is your relationship with Tara? Because we know her relationship with Nancy Worley, the wife of Paul Worley. Remember this Tara? KPBS? When you actually threaten people? My friend Kara, example of a direct threat, she never threatened anyone. I bring all this up because the good news is lies are self-imploding. This is the era that we're in, and it can't be stopped. It's beautiful. It's almost cosmic. And so I offer you the opportunity to actually course correct before you even begin, because your days here are going to be a nightmare. Not based on anything we do, it's just everything that unfolds here. How good can it get?
Thank you. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it's your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We will begin with our first caller.
All aboard. Welcome to the Board, Mayor Aguirre. I provide the moderate leadership the Board desperately needs. There are some old items just waiting for you to advance them, some good, some not, some horrible. They're often there because the Supervisors expect you to cast a yes vote. Please do not hurry. Read every word carefully, listen to every argument, make up your own mind. Remember, you are not here just to represent your district, but to work for the good of the entire county. Some people need a handout to succeed, but don't spoil them just because of something done centuries ago or far away. The equity practiced by this Board pits people against each other by race, religion, creed, gender, even zip code. One side does not fit all. Many would rather be integrated into society than get constant handouts or pity parties. Tolerance, on the other hand, comes in many forms, for other cultures, customs, languages, communication style, tolerance of different foods, politics, and beliefs, realizing that clocks may be set differently, and allowing a bit of time before making people late to work. So, you know, please steer a moderate path. Don't get tempted by either the right or the left, or anyone who just tries to rush things. You know, we've seen a lot of last-minute...
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hey, Consolo here. So, okay, Paloma Aguirre, you've been part of the system that has failed the people you now represent at this county level. Have you ever told your constituents about the United Nations' agenda for the 21st century? Not the talking points, the actual blueprint, the one being quietly implemented through land use controls, climate mandates, and regional planning disguised as progress. If you haven't done the research, you have no business in that seat. This Board celebrates itself while the people suffer. You install overpriced, unused bike lanes that leave seniors and disabled residents behind. This Board, they greenlight high-density housing that no one can afford under the lie of sustainability. They raise taxes and fees in the name of equity, while families are drowning and homelessness explodes. They ignore the people's voice, like right now, where residents, especially our elders, are fighting to stop this turquoise tower from ruining their community. But the younger generation isn't even aware that they have a voice. And the officials likely bow to money over people's wishes. When hundreds show up and still lose, what more proof not serve us? It's all by design. This is the UN Agenda 21 in action, masked as Vision Zero, Smart Growth, and Climate Action. Global Control rebranded as Local Policy. No vote, no consent, just implementation. And basically, you're not representing the people. You're managing them as distracted, overworked, overtaxed, digital livestock. There is no red or blue. There is no left or right. There is only the machine, and those of us who refuse to kneel to it. You want to...
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Yes, welcome to hell, Paloma. It's so interesting to see how you failed your own community, and now you're set to fail the county with even more people that you're going to be representing. It's just interesting, because now you're kind of caused, you know, Imperial Beach more money because you decided to leave there and, you know, come and be a part of the Board of Supervisors, leaving your community to pay for an election and, you know, continue to suffer the effects of the negligence of the government for not doing what needs to be done in the Tijuana River Valley. It's just ridiculous that they, you know, have been stalled, because you were not elected. You've been selected to be in that seat. And it's going to be interesting, because you are going to regret every moment of being up there. And it's not because of the people, but it's because you guys self-implode, and you do it all on your own. You don't need anybody to help you. You guys are just so narcissistic and arrogant that you guys think that you're untouchable. And all that has to happen is that little house of cards that you're standing on, because there's no foundation, will come crashing down. And people will see exactly what you've been up to all along, which is nothing, which is not helping the people, which is encouraging suffering of people instead of actually doing something. But, you know, it's more of the same, all that we have to look forward to. So it'll just be interesting to have a new cat in the bag to, you know, hold accountable for all of the nefarious things that you're going to refuse to do. And it's so funny, because you're a lot of talk, and, oh, I like that you guys go and you speak at the Board of Supervisors and all this stuff. I'm sure you're going to soon regret saying those words, because they were all a facade anyway. It's all, you know, just talk so that you can look good, as long as you look good, and, you know, the people think that you're, you know, just kind of like Satan masquerading as an angel of light. You guys do a very good job of emulating that. But the people see through you, and the light shines bright. And when the light shines bright, the darkness trembles, so...
Thank you. For the record, that speaker was allegedly Audra. Hear from the next caller.
Hello, selected. How you guys doing? According to the Governor Newsom election, about 5,500,000 ballots were stolen to keep Governor Newsom, which we're going to get a skyride in Pacific Beach. I also went ahead and emailed you guys a list of homeless facilities that you guys could go ahead and look at to find the fraud, because the NGOs are committing it. How do I know that? ACLU selects our people to be our supervisors. They selected Monica. They selected Paloma. I'm pretty sure that they selected the three women that are up there. And then because Jim is unwilling to go ahead and say anything about registration for fraud and go ahead and try to push this to the IDs, then he's okay. They're not going to vote against him, so maybe he might possibly get the seat. But it all depends. If he speaks up against ACLU, fuck no, he's out too. Like, anyone who speaks up, especially in California, against ACLU will not win a seat in California. Why? Because we have so many damn homeless facilities that you could funnel fraudulent ballots through. And then if you ask after an election is done, how many canceled voters due to death or the fact that they don't live here, the registrar voters can go ahead and keep that information from you, because she's the only one allowed to have that information, like who committed fraud. She doesn't have to report it to anyone. She doesn't even have to look at the election afterwards, because registration cards come in 15 days before the election. They don't have time to go and clean up everything. And so they clean it up after the election, after the votes are counted. So you could see a lot of the fraud, especially in the Governor...
For the record, that speaker was identified as gambler. We'll hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Ann Riddle, and welcome, Paloma Aguirre. I hope that you bring with yourself a lot of experience in helping us in the unincorporated areas. Take all of our land use decisions at your meetings, and they affect us dramatically. And we are concerned that media has made it very clear to us that we may be on the losing end of a three-to-two vote, perhaps even a four-to-one vote. And I'd like to respectfully suggest that the way we know we have a fair and caring majority is how they treat the minority. And so I hope that as you examine agenda items, you will keep foremost those of us who live in the unincorporated area. Did we ask for those items that you're going to be looking at regarding land use? And if we didn't, then let's not be considering them. And keep in mind that our planning groups mean the world to us out here in the unincorporated area. We agenda sooner than Thursday, if we're lucky, Friday most generally, so that we as a planning group can look them over. And we're already expressing concern about today's agenda, because we noticed that it's northern part of our unincorporated area, our supervisor there seems not to be well-represented on the committees. He seems to have been marginalized. I hope this isn't a signal about how we are all going to be treated out here in the unincorporated, that our own supervisor is being marginalized. We look forward to a change, and Paloma, we're hoping that you'll bring your caring voice to our concerns and not feel like you have to have a political clipboard that you're looking at for guidance. Best wishes to you as you go forward.
Thank you. Vice Terra Lawson-Reimer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. Wondering if any of my colleagues have any comments? Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp?
Supervisor-elect, welcome aboard. This is an exciting day. I would like to move the resolution forward. Thank you.
I'm happy to second and take a moment to make a couple comments. I think this is an incredibly exciting day. I am so very much looking forward to working with Supervisor-elect Aguirre as a colleague on this Board. She is an inspirational leader, a person of great principle, great vision, and, you know, a person I've watched for a long time now and really felt like she always showed up, fighting for her community, fighting for what's right. And I'm very much looking forward to her bringing that integrity and that leadership to...
Well, I also wanted to... Supervisor-to-be Aguirre?
Supervisor-elect.
Supervisor-elect, I'm sorry. Welcome, and I look forward to working with you, and hopefully, with common sense solutions here at the county. So welcome aboard.
Supervisor Anderson.
I'd just like to say welcome aboard, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. There's a motion by Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp, seconded by myself, for approval of item one. Please vote.
Vice Terra Lawson-Reimer, that motion passes unanimously with all Supervisors who are eligible to vote on this item, voting aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will now move to the waterfront park southwest lawn for the swearing-in ceremony and reconvene in the chamber at 11:00 a.m. to continue with the rest of the items on today's agenda. And I've been notified by staff that I'm to make sure that my colleagues are actually all sitting in their seats at 11:00 a.m. So thank you very much, and please help me achieve that objective. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone! What a beautiful day to come together as a community to witness history in the making. My name is Dr. Tina Maria King, proud president of San Diego College of Continuing Education. And I am honored to serve as the emcee and the official swearing-in ceremony of San Diego County Supervisor Paloma Aguirre. As someone who has dedicated a career to inclusive excellence and equity-minded leadership from classrooms in Compton to serving our diverse adult learners here in San Diego, and most importantly, as a mother to our future, I feel deeply connected to the values this community holds dear, values that Supervisor Paloma Aguirre embodies and champions every day. We are gathered here in celebration, in pride, and with purpose. Today is not just about a new leader taking office. Today is about working families, the people of South County, the power of community, and the promise of bold, inclusive leadership. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge some of the many dignitaries and community leaders joining us this morning. Given that we have so many incredible elected officials joining us today, we're going to honor each with one strong clap as I name them. So if you are present and you hear your name, please stand or wave. So we're gonna try this out. I have faith in all of us, okay? So, for our federal and state-level officials: State Senator Steve Padilla. Say that again? All right, we gotta do that over. All right, let's do it one more time. All right. State Senator Steve Padilla. Y'all did it. Listen. Assemblymember Tasha Burner. Assemblymember Dr. Lashay Sharp Collins. Assemblymember Dr. Darshana Patel. Senator Pro Tem Emeritus Tony Atkins. Now county officials: District Attorney Summer Stephan. Sheriff Kelly Martinez. County Treasurer Dan McAllister. Assessor and Recorder Jordan Marks. Supervisor Monica Montgomery Stapp. Chairwoman Tara Lawson-Reimer. Supervisor Joel Anderson. Supervisor Jim Desmond. Now our City of San Diego officials: Mayor Todd Gloria. City Attorney Heather Ferbert. Council President Pro Tem Kent Lee. Councilmember Sean Elo Rivera. Councilmember Stephen Whitburn. Look, I'm taking his off-script. Councilmember Dr. Jen Campbell. Councilmember Marnie Von Wilpert. Councilmember Henry Foster. Other city mayors: The Mayor of National City, Ron Morrison. Hold on, y'all. Hold on, y'all. Wait a minute. Paloma, hold on. Let's do that one more time. Mayor of National City, Ron Morrison. There you go. City of Coronado, Mayor John Duncan. City of Delmar Mayor Terry Gastroland. City of Lemon Grove, Mayor Allison Snow. Deputy Mayors and Vice Mayors represented today: Chula Vista Deputy Mayor Catalina Chavez. City of Oceanside Deputy Mayor Eric Joyce. Vice Mayor of National City Marcus Bush. City Council Members represented today for National City: Councilmember Ditas Yamani. Councilmember Jose Rodriguez. Councilmember Luz Molina. Representing Chula Vista, City Attorney Marco Verdugo. Councilmember Cesar Fernandez. Councilmember Michael Inzunza. Representing City of Coronado, Councilmember Amy Stewart. Councilmember Kelly Purvis. Representing City of Vista, Councilmember Corina Contreras. City of Lemon Grove, Councilmember Jessica Heredia. Councilmember Yadira Altimiriano. City of La Mesa, County Member Lauren Casaros. City of Carlsbad, Councilmember Teresa Acosta. Councilmember Priya Bat Patel. City of San Marcos, Councilmember Maria Nunez. Representing Imperial Beach, Councilmember Matthew Leba Gonzalez. Councilmember Jack Fisher. Councilmember Carol Seaberry. Now our education officials: San Diego Unified School District Board Trustee Dr. Cody Peterson. Southwestern College Board Member Nicholas Ugetta. Southwestern College Board Member Chris Galicia Brown. National School Board Member Cindy Lopez. San Diego County Board of Education Member Greg Robinson. San Diego Community College District Board Trustee Mariah Jamison. Samaria Valenzuela and Oscar Higuerre from Secretary of Economic Development with the City of Tijuana. All right, and a couple more: Luciana Gonzalez representing Mexican Council Ambassador Alicia Kerber. And of course, thank you to all of you: Residents, Supporters, Friends, and Neighbors. You help make this moment possible, and you all belong here. This morning's program includes spiritual blessings, musical celebration, the official swearing-in by Paloma's husband, Delio Bokowski, and remarks from the Supervisor Higuerre herself. And thank you for being a part of the journey, and let's give them all a warm welcome as we begin. To grounding our ceremony in spirit and land and in truth, we begin a blessing from Bobby Wallace of the Barona Band of Mission Indians, who will offer a traditional tribal blessing: the Kumia Nation.
Howdy, everybody. It's good to be here on this historic day, all the friends, all the relatives, acquaintances, and people that I will know in the future. I'm honored to be here, and I want to give a little blessing for the land and all of us. I'd like to honor this land. My people have been here for thousands and thousands of years. Mother Earth and this territory kept us alive and helped us press on through hard times and good times since the beginning. From Palomar Mountain to Ensenada and further into the outskirts of the desert, I want to thank the land and the people that are still buried in the cremation sites that are still here right now today. This land we're sitting on right now is close to one of our villages, Cosai, and we honor those people that walked through these sands through time immemorial. I hope today we're all blessed with something really, really good. As being a person who's prayed around many, I know there are many gods, and I hope all of us are blessed by each and every one of our gods to have a great day today and to celebrate with one another and be here for Paloma as she begins her job, her journey as a supervisor for this beautiful city of San Diego. Nuknuwet, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Bobby. To continue in spiritual reflection, we invite Father Wynn of our Lady Guadalupe Church to share an invocation to guide us in this moment of transition and responsibility for our community. As we lift our hearts, may we also open them to lead from compassion, especially for our immigrant neighbors living in fear. I welcome you to the stage, Father.
We begin with a moment of prayer. God protector of us all, draw near to us as we call upon you. We pray for our elected officials, and especially today, we pray for Paloma Aguirre. Give them your Spirit of wisdom and justice, of prudence and of mercy. Guide their hearts and minds so that they may work together for the good of all. Give them attentive ears to listen to the needs of the members of our communities. May they care and protect those who are vulnerable among us: the poor, the immigrant and refugees, the unhoused, the unemployed, the hungry, the uninsured, the elderly, and those who are lonely. Guide them to protect those who are living in fear. Guide their hearts to act with compassion for our immigrant and refugees who are afraid to leave their homes, to go grocery shopping, or to come together in worship for fear of arrest. Make them attentive to the needs of those living with food, housing, and medical insecurities. Give them courageous hearts to make bold decisions that will uplift the lives of all in our communities. May your Spirit lead them to act with courage, wisdom, and love, so that together they might enact policies that will restore the dignity of all, so that all people may live together in true peace, freedom, and justice. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Father Wynn. Please rise if you are able for the National Anthem. Today, we are honored to have it performed by the incredible Malia Crumley. Malia is a proud resident of Imperial Beach and joins us today with her wonderful family. Please join me in welcoming her to the stage.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawnlight we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And now, in true South Bay... Now, you may all be seated. And now, in true South Bay style, we mark this historic occasion with the music that speaks to the soul of our region. I'm gonna go ahead and just continue this piece so you all get a chance to know exactly who they are. We know that mariachi is more than music. It's the sound of celebration, resilience, resistance, and community. I want to also thank Victor Viveros and the Mariachi Nuevo Tradición de San Diego. And now, the moment we've all been waiting for. It is my honor to invite a fearless leader with bold vision, Supervisor Paloma Aguirre and her husband, Delio Bokowski, to the stage for the official swearing-in. Please join me in welcoming them both. And if you can stand, stand up.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Paloma Aguirre.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We did it, guys! We did it! Thank you. Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. Buenos dias a todos! Thank you. Thank you, Dr. King, for your leadership and helping make this day so special. Thank you so much. Where are you? Where is she? Thank you, Dr. King. Thank you. I want to start by thanking my husband, Delio, for standing with me through thick and thin, unconditionally. I really appreciate you. Y a mis familiares y amigos que nos están viendo por YouTube desde muy lejos en México, les mando un fuerte abrazo lleno de amor. Gracias por todo su apoyo. Today, we're in the South Bay. Hoy es un nuevo día para el sur de San Diego, not just because there's a new choice on the Board of Supervisors, but because the working people of South County made their voices heard. You stood up and demanded something different, a change in priorities, un nuevo enfoque, a county government where the focus is on working people, not the wealthy and well-connected. A county that takes on the sewage crisis poisoning our water and air instead of pretending it's someone else's problem. A county where hard-working immigrants are respected and protected, not just with words, but with real action. And you demanded real urgency, verdadera urgencia, because the slow status quo isn't working. To the people of District One, I hear you loud and clear. I didn't come to the county to sit back. I came here to fight back. For a future where workers' wages go up and family costs go down, where our beaches are open and as clean as everywhere else, where healthcare and food assistance for the most vulnerable isn't cut but protected, where District One gets its fair share for the housing, parks, and safe streets we've always deserved. And I'm ready to fight for it every day and every way with everything I have. This fight for something better, it's personal. My grandfather rented horses to earn a living. Mi abuelita, the backbone of my family, sold popsicos y elitos out of her neighbor's fridge in order to keep her grandchildren afloat in Mexico. I'm the proud daughter of immigrants who came to America and worked long hours bussing tables so I could have a better life. My parents are no longer with us, but not a day goes by that I'm not filled with gratitude for their sacrifice and in all of their strength. I hope wherever they are, they're proud of this moment, our moment. They taught me to never forget where I came from, to stand up for what's right, and that with hard work and dedication, anything is possible, like a young girl from Puerto Vallarta becoming the county board of supervisors. So after growing up in Mexico, I came back to the U.S. on my own to go to college. I worked two jobs while putting myself through school at USD and built a better life grounded in service, science, and justice. I organized and neglected neighborhoods like the one I came from, fighting for clean water and fair housing when no one else would. I got a master's from Scripps so I could fight even harder and smarter to fix the sewage crisis. And I ran for mayor of IB not to start a political career, but to end our sewage nightmare. So as a small-town board of mayor, when those in power said the sewage crisis was too complicated to fix and IB was too small to be taken seriously, I said, "Watch us." Fighting tooth and nail alongside our congressional delegation, I stood up to both parties in Washington, and we won $600 million from Congress to clean up the toxic mess. We pushed the EPA to stop dragging its feet and finally act. Progress is now starting, but it's not enough. I'm not slowing down, not even for a second. That's who I am. I don't back down from tough fights, and that's exactly the kind of supervisor I'll be. My priority every day will be fighting for the working people of District One with urgency, con urgencia. We need more affordable housing and fast. That means expanding the county's innovative housing trust fund and actually using it. It means protecting affordable homes and the tenants living in them. In IB, I worked across-party lines to protect tenants from predatory rent hikes, and in our campaign, we earned a mandate to take action county-wide. And I believe in a San Diego county with more good-paying union jobs, so buying a home and giving your family a better life is a reality and not just a fantasy. That should start with a countywide project labor agreement, so local workers are first in line for good jobs, rebuilding our roads, our parks, and our future. And we have to start treating essential workers like the heroes they are. Caregivers, homeless outreach workers, nurses, these critical workers deserve respect, support, and fair pay. And I want a San Diego county to do more to expand apprenticeships and job training, because not every good job needs a four-year degree. And let me be clear, we need a county that stands up for our values, not Trump's agenda. That means standing up to the violent ICE raids terrorizing our neighborhoods. No one should be kidnapped in a parking lot on their way to work. That's not public safety. That's chaos. And we better be ready, because Washington is coming for our healthcare, too. A county government that cares for those with the least can't stand by while Washington guts Medicaid and gives tax cuts for those who have the most. And you know I won't stop until the toxic sewage crisis is fixed for good. I've been fighting this for years, starting as a volunteer, then working as an environmental activist at Wal Coast, then serving as mayor of IB, because it's painfully obvious that we've been willfully ignored. Let me ask you, if this sewage crisis was happening in Malibu or Mar-a-Lago, wouldn't it have been fixed a long time ago? I want to thank my colleagues on the board who voted to advance my five-point sewage plan last month. It's a real step forward. Because we can't just wait on Washington. The county must act where it can to eliminate toxic hotspots, to protect our children's health. And that's why my first official act as supervisor is calling a sewage crisis action meeting this Thursday. So, yes. So every county department is on notice. Our sewage crisis demands urgency and results. I'm not interested in more delays, blame, or excuses. This issue isn't partisan, it's personal. Our kids breathe this air. Our families are suffering, and I'm ready to work with any of my colleagues, regardless of party, to get this done and deliver real results for South County. Before I close, I want to speak directly to the people who kept this county running, our county employees, social workers, nurses, caregivers, firefighters, protective service workers, janitors, and everyone in between. You protect us in emergencies. You care for seniors and the sick who can't care for themselves. You don't just do your job, you hold lives together. And I want you to know, I see you, I respect you, and I have your back. This county only works because you do. And now, it's time for the rest of the county government to match your commitment with urgency, with a fighting focus on the working class, con urgencia, con acción, con un enfoque en nuestra gente trabajadora. And I know what it looks like because I've lived it. I wasn't supposed to be here. I'm just the surfer girl who wanted clean water in my town, the daughter of immigrants who cleaned tables so their kids could dream bigger. But here I am, and I'm not alone, because this seat doesn't belong to me. It belongs to us. To every South County neighborhood that's been underfunded and left behind, to everyone who believes in a better, more affordable San Diego, I'm here to say with you, South County is ready to fight. I'm ready to lead, and we're just getting started. So if you're ready for clean air and clean water, say it with me, si se puede. If you're ready for fair wages and affordable homes. If you believe in a county that works just as hard as the working people who build it, say it out loud. This is our new day in the South Bay. Thank you. All right. You all may be seated. Thank you, Supervisor Paloma. That was beautiful. Thank you for those powerful and heartfelt words, si se puede. This quote epitomizes you and your leadership, Supervisor Paloma. Be not afraid of greatness. Some are born great, some achieve greatness, and some have greatness thrust upon them. Your vision, your voice, and your values will help shape the future of our county, and you do it with such courage and authenticity, and most importantly, with heart, corazón. Thank you. We are at a critical time in history for our nation and county. It is with the collective us that ensured we have strong and powerful leadership positioned to lead us through. Before we close, I want to offer heartfelt thanks to Bobby Wallace, Father Wen, Malia Crumley, and our amazing mariachi ensemble for helping make this day special. Thank you to the county staff and team behind the scenes, and of course, thank you, each and every one of you, for being here this morning. You could have been anywhere, but you are here to support our new supervisor. Thank you to the comunidades, the comunidades, for showing up and showing out for this historic day. I want to echo what was shared today. Thank you to all of those who got us to this moment. This was the People Power Campaign, the support of the unions, and a very special thank you to our SDCCD Union AFT Guild 1931, specifically our president, Jim Mailer. Thank you. This isn't just a swearing-in, it's a celebration of who we are and who Paloma is and where we are going together with her. Please stay and enjoy the reception. There will be live music refreshments and time to connect with your neighbors, friends, and community leaders. We invite you to be a part of the movement Paloma represents, not just today, but every day. Once again, thank you and congratulations to our new supervisor, Paloma Aguirre. And we know that you will do the hard work, not just the hard work, but the heart work. With love for people and the people in mind at all times, even on the hardest decisions, you will keep the people in mind as you go through the next steps. You did it for so many, and we are very proud of you. We will end with her saying today, si se puede. Congratulations. Thank you.